There you go.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure and honor to call and order this April 7th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joyner.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Boer.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Here.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Barry Martin. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us. And our fire marshal tonight is Bradley Watson. Thank you for being with us as well. I'd like to recognize our city manager for his bi-monthly updates.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to start tonight. First, I'm going to call on Jeff Fanzler to come up to give you an update on the downtown parking program that is being put in place.
Mr. Fanzler?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, member of the city council, Jeff Fanzler, director of transportation for the city of Winston-Salem. Real briefly, I want to just provide an update on the November action that this body took to modernize our parking program. So last fall, we did bring it out before you to consider some ordinance changes, including a rate increase, but also the modernization of the program, both on-street and off-street for our municipally managed parking spaces. And since that time, what we've been doing is working with the selected vendor, Pay by Phone, to get them under contract, to go through the logistics of their deployment, and then the nuance of how they would roll out their work here in Winston-Salem. So I stand before you tonight with an update that what I want to show you is the signs that you'll see. So if you recall, the technology really is to combat the aging equipment, the meters that are in disrepair, and really to combat the state of repair that our current parking systems are in. And to do that, as you remember, it is going to be a technology-based solution via a mobile device and the application on your mobile device. But from there, what you'll see, they will look like this in the field. And so these are kind of the signs that you'll see that'll be deployed, that'll have our logo, of course, the location number, and this is what you'll enter when you download that Pay by Phone app to designate where you are in real space, and you assign, you know, your one-hour stay or whatever you choose based on the posted time restriction at that location, all of which can be easily navigated in the app, Pay by Phone, both available on Apple and Android, Google Play, et cetera. So tonight, we are deploying those. As you see, they're being covered right now. So it's a big effort, many, many signs to all of downtown. We'll have to go out to establish this new program. And as we mentioned in November, we will be starting on-street. So we're going to improve that concept, educate folks, get them to download the application. And our intention tonight is to, we are on pace to have a deployment, go live, really, by May the first. Now, what we're committing to, Mr. Mayor, is that when we do go live, we'll be doing quite a bit of a campaign with our on-street enforcement team to make sure we educate folks on how we download the app, what the app looks like, how they navigate the different parking locations, the numbers that they're assigned to. And then, so we're not going to be just enforcing it, you know, right off the bat as soon as we roll this out. We do feel like there is a benefit to educating our community on the new program. And so once we feel like that, we'll be ready to start that enforcement piece, start collecting the appropriate time that is posted there, you know, one hour, two hours, whatever that's used to stay. But we're looking at a March 1st where we'll unveil the signs, we'll do some adjustments to all the existing signs. In other words, we have to take the old signs down, and then we'll be cut over to the new system with a pretty good effort to educate the community as we go live. So I'm happy to take any questions on that. We spent a lot of time last fall talking about this, and so however detailed you'd like me to go into, Mr. Manager, I'm happy to stop there.
That's just Mr. Fanzler, Mr. Clark.
When will you take out the mechanical coin operator?
Councilmember Clark, we're going to get this new system up and running, switch over, and then as we take the old signs down that corresponds with the meters simultaneously, we're going to block by block and pull those right down. So May 1st, pretty much, is when you're going to start all those. Probably just to keep things moving, we'll disconnect the meters, pull them off, and come right behind them, cut the posts off, fill the holes. So it'll be a coordinated effort with the old signs that correspond with the single-spaced meters.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers. Joyner?
It's the parking, the new parking regulations, will that be 24/7 or holidays and Sundays off?
Councilmember Joyner, great question. So the restrictions that are there today, so as you see on this sign, two-hour parking from 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. So that will be what was in that zone today. So what's there today, that restriction of time, will still apply to the new program.
The Councilmember, Mayor Protem Adams and Councilmember Hall.
Yes, Mr. Fanzler, we know that there are other parking contractors throughout the city in parking lots and everything. Do their signs look like our signs?
Mayor Protem, that's a great question. The key distinction, obviously, is the Winston-Salem logo, and I appreciate you calling that out. So we are certainly going to have attention that municipally managed spaces are only subject to our ordinance and this program. There's many parking providers and all types of off-street and off-street all over downtown. Of course, no affiliation with the city of Winston-Salem, but the ones that are designated with the Winston-Salem logo are subject to the new program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Joins. Mr. Fanzler, thank you for that. A few of my questions were already answered. I am concerned, however, about citizens who may want to park in some of these parking spaces who are not as familiar with the Google Play, Android, Apple Pay, et cetera, and what our plans are as a city to assist those citizens who may not just be that tech savvy. I have received a few questions about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Appreciate the question. And so we tried to address a lot of that with providing them a toll-free number as well. So if they don't want to download the actual application, our hope is that they would at least give us a call and then reserve their space via the toll-free number that is posted on the sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Fanzler, you mentioned the signs going up will be replicating what the enforcement is there now, two hours, one hour. If there's no times, there's still free parking there.
Yeah, so we're still, every zone that's out there today, we're going to honor that. And then, of course, what the dynamic nature of this allows for future decisions to be made, should we choose to do that. But today, when we roll this out, we do intend to honor the restrictions that are there.
That's great. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fanzler. Thank you. Good luck with that.
Thank you. That will be a big effort, and we do know that that's some change for the community, but we believe in the long term, they'll see vast improvements in how parking operates in the downtown because of the work of our staff on getting that done. A couple, follow up with one more transportation item, just to, and I believe council is all aware of this, but the city has entered into an executed grant agreement with the Federal Transit Authority to procure five replacement hybrid electric fixed bus, fixed route buses on behalf of the Winston-Salem Transit Authority. In July 24, the FTA announced the award of a $4.4 million in federal funding for the Winston-Salem to purchase the buses through the work with the FTA, and that has been executed, so that we now can move forward with procuring those five buses and our manufacturing partner, New Flyer, or with our manufacturing, New Flyer. And it takes about 12 months for them to purchase these. One other piece I wanted to put on this one is this was a significant item of concern that we carried with us when we went to the Hill to meet with our federal representatives. And so tonight, I just wanted to personally thank Senator Tillis and Bud and our representatives McDowell and Harrington, all of which you met with, expressed concerns about us getting these things moving through the federal government. And so we got back, and now we've seen this grant come through. So we appreciate any efforts on our behalf to keep those moving. A couple of different things on events that are going on. The River Run Film Festival will begin April the 11th. The 25 lineup delivers a diverse slate of over 160 films. As an Academy Award-winning, or Academy Award qualifying festival, there were several films that were, last year's festival, that actually won Academy Awards this year. It guarantees top-tier storytelling. So we welcome all the film attendants, festival attendants, and the filmmakers to our city, and hope that everybody in the community will get a chance to go out and enjoy some of these new films. The Winston-Salem Police Department is hosting a Community Day recruitment event on Saturday, April the 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Beatty Training Center, which is at 1200 North Patterson Avenue. Attendees will learn about the recruitment process, various career paths within the department, and what it's like to serve the Winston-Salem community. The event is free, and no registration is required, and more information can be found on the Police Department Facebook page. We do encourage anybody that's thinking about a career in law enforcement, we have a great department. We hope that they'll come out and take advantage of learning a little bit more about how to become a police officer here for the city. And then, another public safety event, but the Battle of the Badges, which is a friendly hockey face-off between the Winston-Salem Police and the Winston-Salem Fire Departments, will be held April 18th at 7:00 p.m. at the Winston-Salem Fairgrounds Arena Skate Rink. Tickets are available at their box office and at the Winston-Salem Fairgrounds website, and all the money's going to good charitable calls, I believe. And then, one final recognition, our Fire Department Public Information Officer, Tabitha Childress, received the 2024 Community Service Award from the Forsyth County Fire and Rescue Association. So we congratulate Tabitha on her great work and look forward to many more accolades coming her way. So with that, I'll stand ready to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Page? Thank you, Mr. Page. Greatly appreciate it. We have a number of honorariums we want to present tonight, so if we could go to item H1, please.
Item H1, proclamation declaring April as National Fair Housing Month. Whereas the month of April is recognized throughout the United States of America as Fair Housing Month, this year marks the 57th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. And whereas Title IX of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, set forth a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, nationality, religion, gender, familial status, or disability. And whereas the Winston-Salem Human Relations Commission is charged with enforcing the local fair housing ordinance, and whereas the Winston-Salem Human Relations Commission promotes the belief that equal housing is an important component of our diverse community. And whereas, ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas, the city of Winston-Salem fully supports the intents and purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and in 1982 adopted the Fair Housing Ordinance and its revision in 1990 to include the two new protected classes of handicapped and families with children. Now therefore, I J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Fair Housing Month.
Thank you. It's my honor to present this tonight to the Chairman of the Human Relations Commission, Jason McKinney. Representing Mr. McKinney is our Director of the Human Relations Commission, Mr. Christian. Thank you for everything the Human Relations Commission does for keeping our eye on this ball and moving us forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, just want to take this opportunity and thank you all for your continued support as we continue to move forward with our fair housing endeavors. Again, thank you so much for everything that you do.
You're here.
Thank you.
Item H2, proclamation declaring April as Cultural Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Winston-Salem is a city that welcomes and celebrates people of all races, ethnicities, religions, genders, sexual orientations, physical and mental circumstances, and economic statuses, and strives to cultivate our city's culture, which enhances the quality of life in our community. And whereas, we recognize the city's non-discrimination ordinance passed by the city council on March 22nd, 2021, to expand the role of Winston-Salem's Human Relations Commission to support the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom of discrimination. And whereas, the residents of Winston-Salem are urged to expand community outreach, engagement, and authentic collaborations that will empower each Winston-Salem resident with the ability and desire to help create a society that condemns racism, misogyny, intolerance, discrimination, or oppression towards any person. And whereas, the Human Relations Department applies a lens to make the city of Winston-Salem an organization where employees use their unique experiences and backgrounds, where ideas are heard, and where we advance a positive workplace cultural daily to meet the needs of our employees and community. Our vision is for individuals to feel a deep sense of worth, purpose, and value. Now therefore, I J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Cultural Awareness Month.
Thank you, and I'd like for Mr. Christian to come back up and receive this proclamation. Well, again, we thank the Human Relations Commission for all the work that you all do to keep us on the right track with regards to our cultural awareness, as well as housing and other programs that you do all year long. So again, thank you for that.
So again, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, on behalf of the Human Relations Department, want to take this opportunity to thank you all again for supporting us in this endeavor, as we look to not only educate but inform our employees and, of course, the citizens in our community of the importance of culture, all cultures in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
To invite all of you, including our community members, to celebrate this month with us, we have a number of activities going on. We have art from local artists that will be exhibited in City Hall in the Bryce Stewart Building. We have performances coming up next week, and the last couple of weeks of the month, we have local food trucks that will share a variety of cuisines with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Item H3, please.
Item H3, resolution declaring a week of mourning in memory of Dr. Virginia K. Newell. Whereas, Dr. Virginia Kimbrough was born on October 7th, 1917, in Advance, North Carolina, to William Kimbrough and Dinah Hill Kimbrough, the second youngest of nine children. And whereas, she graduated from Atkins High School in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and received her Bachelor of Arts degree in mathematics from Talladega College in Talladega, Alabama. And whereas, Dr. Newell returned to Atkins High School as a math teacher, where she met and later married George Fisher Newell in 1943, they later welcomed two daughters. And whereas, Dr. Newell earned a master's degree from New York University and a doctor of education degree from the University of Sarasota. And whereas, Dr. Virginia K. Newell was a Winston-Salem State University professor, emeritus of mathematics, where she was chairman of the Department of Mathematics and Computer Science. She built the computer science program and raised thousands of dollars to support it, and retired in 1985. Honoring Dr. Newell's contribution to the school, Winston-Salem State University renamed its computer facility to the Virginia K. Newell Academic Computer Center. And whereas, Dr. Newell has always been a visionary in education, sending one of her daughters to boarding school in Connecticut and her other daughter to Germany to participate in the Experiment in International Living Program. And whereas, Dr. Newell was the founder of the YWCA's Best Choice Center, an academically focused program that provides after-school care, enrichment activities, and summer camp for children of low-income families. Dr. Newell's passion for education continued with her involvement with the Math and Science Academy at Winston-Salem State University and tutoring students. And whereas, in 1977, Dr. Virginia K. Newell was elected as one of the first African-American females as a member of the Winston-Salem Board of Aldermen, now city council, for the East Ward. She served 16 years and worked tirelessly for better housing, racial unity, and economic independence. And whereas, in the East Ward, Dr. Newell initiated the African-American bank, the East Winston Shopping Center, 10 investment clubs, and served on an economic platform that developed and built Ivy Arms Apartments and Community Center. And whereas, Dr. Virginia K. Newell's unyielding dedication and commitment to service have made a positive difference in many lives, a role model for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem hereby declare a week of mourning in memory of Dr. Virginia K. Newell, and express their deepest gratitude for her years of dedicated service to the citizens of Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. I'll vote in favor of this resolution. Please say aye.
Aye.
I know no one's opposed, and that's unanimous. We're honored tonight to have Dr. Newell's granddaughter, Dr. Mary Branch. If she's here, if she would please come forward. I don't see Dr. Branch, so we'll make sure we get this to her. Dr. Newell's memorial service is this coming Saturday at 11:00 o'clock at Wake Chapel, so if a lot of you can make that. We'll now return to the agenda, which is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. Items on the consent agenda, which the council will take first tonight, have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Our meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13 and the city's YouTube page, and it will be replayed on Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, where you can just log on and click on watch council meetings online. I know that Councilmember, Mayor Protem Adams, wants item C3 pulled. Are there any other items you wish pulled?
I move for approval of the consent agenda. Second?
Second by Councilmember Cipio. We'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. By the way, we'll be voting with the iPads tonight from this juncture on. So item C3, please.
Item C3, resolution rescinding in part a prior resolution allocating a $410,000 transformational grant to Christ Rescue Temple Apostle Church.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. What my question is, we're rescinding it because they asked us to, but this is our money. It was to the tune, the total was over $1,101,400. Where is this money going if we're not using it for this? What bucket does it fall back into? And can it be used for newer projects that are like this, which is basically community development, housing, things like that?
Mr. McClam?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Mayor Joins, members of city council, Chantel McClam, Neighborhood Services Director. So the funding that was rescinded, it was rescinded at the request of Christ Rescue Temple, and it was $410,000. And since it came from the ARPA pot and city council approved that pot of money to be used towards affordable housing, the $410,000 would go back into the affordable housing pot.
Thank you. So that means that we could get other requests for housing, affordable housing, and we would be able to utilize that money as such.
That is correct. As you know, we're on a cycle, so when we open up the single-family affordable housing again in June, we'd be able to get requests for that, and then we'll open up the Lytec cycle again in the end of October, and therefore, we'll be able to utilize this funding towards affordable housing projects.
Thank you.
But this money has to be spent by the end of '26, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
Mayor Protem?
I move for approval of item C3.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor of the item, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now go to the general agenda, which involves a public hearing on the economic development funding, a funding for family services, a resolution on city participation, the 2025 North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference, a city code amendment, a contract update with Novant Health, and a pledge to promote civility in Winston-Salem. When the public hearing is called, person in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. The proponents and opponents will be allowed three minutes each for presentation, a total of 15 minutes on each of the sides there. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. Item G1, please.
Item G1, public hearing and consideration of a resolution authorizing economic development assistance through the spec building revolving loan program to Front Street Capital for construction of a speculative building at Union Cross Industrial Center pursuant to NCGS 158-7 dot one.
Thank you. Mr. Millet, would you please give us an update on what this item deals with?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council. You will remember that way back in January, council approved the creation of the revolving loan, revolving spec loan program to assist developers with the construction of spec buildings. You'll remember at the time, we talked about the importance of having those in the community as product to show prospective industry, as well as speeding up their timeline to begin operations. That program was funded, or is funded, by both geo-bond funds specifically designated for economic development from both 2014 and 2018. We have received our first request for the use of those funds from Front Street Capital. They're requesting a $3.5 million loan to assist with the construction of a 300,000-square-foot spec building at Union Cross Industrial Center. The city loan would supplement a capital stack of $19.5 million primary mortgage and $13.5 million of equity. Construction is scheduled to begin in the third quarter of 2025, and it's expected that additional investment upon occupation of the building to be over $2 million. The loan would be repaid in full upon the occupation of the facility, the subsequent selling or refinancing of the facility, but that would be paid back no later than five years from the date of approval, regardless of the status of those first two criteria. Since 2017, we have partnered with Front Street on three similar projects with similar terms. All of those buildings are fully leased, and all of those loans were repaid in full within 19 months. We have representatives from Front Street Capital, as well as Greater Winston-Salem, in support of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Millet. Just to reiterate, these funds from the 2014 and '18 bond issue that the voters specifically approved for economic development- approved for economic development purposes.
Correct, for economic development. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Millet. Can you give us an idea of because of the city and citizens taking this initiative, a vision down the road of jobs and economic development? About how many jobs have been created behind these spec buildings in the Union Park area?
We can get that information, too, Mayor Protem Adams. I do not recall the numbers off the top of my head, but as I mentioned, the bill, all the buildings that were assisted with city funds are fully occupied shortly after construction and today.
And this is the largest one we've built yet, right?
Correct. The largest to this point, I believe, was 200,000 square feet, and this is 300.
And they've paid us off very early.
Very early.
Our money.
Yes, in less than half the time they were required to.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Clark?
I have the motion, if you'd like.
We've got to do a public here first.
Oh, excuse me. Withdraw my.
Your record. All right. Thank you, Mr. Millet. We have, this is a public hearing. Mr. Coleman Team, please. Coleman? If you would say your name and address for the record.
Coleman Team, Front Street Capital, 450 North Patterson Avenue, Suite 300. Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and the city council appreciate an opportunity to come talk to you tonight. Again, this is the fourth time I've had the opportunity to stand up before you and ask for these funds, really for this partnership, because I think that's what this represents. This represents a partnership dating back to, as Ken mentioned, 2017, where we have done this successfully a number of times. The goal, why Front Street does this, is for economic development, and to Councilmember Adams' point, is to create jobs and to generate tax base. There's thousands of jobs that represent these companies that inhibit these facilities. So on a high level, we've started multiple industrial parks that these facilities are in. We've started with the spec buildings, and those spec buildings have directly also generated build-to-suit transactions. So we've taken one $2.5 million city loan, revolved it three times, generated nearly 2 million square feet of industrial space. That represents almost $2 million in annual taxes to the city and the county on an annual basis, from one $2.5 million loan. In addition to that, that's about $215 million in overall tax base from these assets. The building that we're doing now, again, is 300,000 square feet. We are making specific provisions for this facility to accommodate manufacturing operations, which we have not done in the past. Why that is the case is it usually leads to more jobs and more tax-based investment from the companies that operate here. We're deeply proud of this successful partnership to the city and the county. We are very appreciative of the funds. We think it represents what economic development takes in any municipality these days, which is it is a team sport. It takes everybody coming to the table. These buildings are very expensive, and again, we're building speculative, which means we're going at risk to build these facilities with no tenants. Again, in the past, we've paid these loans back in about 18 to 20 months, respectively, so very, very quick timeframe. That includes the actual construction of the buildings. So it keeps our community competitive, it generates taxes, it increases the tax base, it adds jobs, a diversity of jobs. These are minimum wage, up to executive pay jobs that we're very proud to bring to our community. I'm happy to address any specific questions, and if not, we look forward to getting started on this facility.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Any questions, Ms. Coleman Team? Thank you. That's pretty good return on investment from a $2.5 million initial investment to $215 million. Ellis Kiefer, please.
Good evening, Ellis Kiefer, Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., 525 Vine Street. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Thank you so much for hearing this request. As you guys know, this is critical to our economic development efforts at Greater Winston-Salem. You are well aware that our successes in economic development over the past couple months and years have dwindled, our supply of speculative industrial buildings down to zero, which is a fantastic problem, but also something that we need to address, and we're really excited about this opportunity before you today. You also know that speculative buildings are a critical economic development tool, not only because of the direct jobs and investment that they attract, but also because they often serve, to Coleman's point, as a gateway for companies who are considering our market to get a sense of what it might look like to come and do business in Winston-Salem. The proposed project fills a critical gap in our inventory. Over the past 90 days, 19% of the inquiries that we received have been in that 250,000 to 350,000 square foot range, so really large jobs and investment associated with these projects. This project meets that specific demand, and again, we really appreciate your consideration and your leadership on this initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Any questions, Ms. Kiefer, Ms. Clark?
The location of this building, does it allow for the addition of other buildings in the area?
In.
Kind of that multiplier effect?
Yes, yes, and that is sort of to Coleman's point earlier. Sometimes when companies come and they see a speculative building, that might really just be the brochure for them. They come, they get a foot in the in the door, they've seen our market, and then they say, actually, I want a build-to-suit facility, and I want 500,000 square feet. So often, it has that effect. Great question.
Thank you.
Councilman Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Joins. Hi. Coleman mentioned when he was up here, sorry, Coleman didn't have the question immediately ready when you were here, but I think that you can speak to it, about whenever, you know, the previous projects have been funded, that there had been success in being able to employ minimum wage to executive-level employees. And so on Greater Winston-Salem, Inc.'s side, while we're trying to identify tenants that could use the space, do you all have a hand in kind of making sure that there is that diverse workforce and then making sure that there is prep for workforce readiness?
Absolutely. The nature of most of the companies that are going to be interested in a facility like this, it's going to be more manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, which has that broad spectrum of roles and lots of opportunities, but we also work really closely with the companies we're recruiting to make sure they have local resources to upskill their workforce. We're very closely with Versithec, as well as other local partners, so ensuring that not only is the company brought here successfully, but they have the tools they need to employ our people here in Winston-Salem.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you all.
All right. Mr. Dan Rose, please.
Evening, Dan Rose, 1332 Pleasant Street. Thank you, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem, members of council, for allowing me to speak in opposition of this. First of all, it violates your spec building revolving loan program requirements. This is in the agenda. It's Exhibit 8. It says, "The minimum initial investment for building construction, city loan amount not to exceed 10% of total construction cost." This is a $32 million project, and you're investing $3.5 million. Right off the bat, do I have any math students here? Are we any mathematicians? $3.5 million is more than 10% of $32 million. You cannot approve this tonight. Second of all, you put the cart before the horse on your consent agenda by doing $1.7 million in infrastructural improvements to this site before you even approve this loan to build this for a tenant that doesn't exist. We are out here building buildings for tenants that don't exist at what is very likely the beginning of a global economic downturn. Now, they can brag about having paid off their loans in 19 months in the past. I am going to gamble, as you all are gambling, that that's not going to happen this time. The other thing that's so striking about this is that it's plain and simple pay-for-play politics. We have Coleman Team and Robert Team, who are major donors to the mayor's election campaign, $2,000 each, $4,000 total. Now, I said major donors, but that's barely the cost of like a 2005 Honda Accord. So that's what it costs to get on city council's agenda. We also know that when the mayor has leftover funds from his campaign, that he donates some of those funds. And I'd like to point out from your year-end filing in 2024, that you donated over $10,000 from your campaign finances to your wife's yoga studio. The corruption here is so brazen. The corruption here is so brazen that it almost feels like I feel insane coming up here to point these things out. How is it that our media, our citizenry are uninformed of this stuff? And I have to apologize, because yes, this is the fourth time that they've come up here to the corporate welfare trough of the city of Winston-Salem, getting free money from us. The citizens of Winston-Salem are paying for the debt service here. Do you know how much a market rate loan is right now? It's about 8%. And if you took $3.5 million out, after five years, it would accumulate somewhere around $1.5 million. We're not about saying no to everything here. We're not about saying we don't want jobs created. What we're saying is that this is not the way to do it. They came up here, Coleman came up here and said that what Front Street Capital wants to do is to create jobs and help the community. That's not what they're here to do. They're here to make money. One of the buildings that they bought, one of the parcels of land, excuse me, that they bought from the city of Winston-Salem in 2019, they got for about $1.8 million. Do you know how much they flipped it for? Over $15 million. So they're making $13 million off of us. And what we have here are jobs, yes, but what kind of jobs? We're talking about minimum wage jobs for a lot of the local residents. A lot of folks who come to Winston-Salem from other places might get good jobs at these businesses. Again, we don't know what business. There may never be a business that moves in there. Remember when we bulldozed Brookwood for FedEx and they never came? Remember when we built for Dell and they left after four years? And what we have now is even if you get a good job as a working-class person in Winston-Salem at these companies, Southern Carlson and some of these other companies that they've built for in the past, we're talking $40,000 a year. And nowadays, that's not even 60% of AMI. And what we're talking about here is a city that needs jobs, and I appreciate Mayor Protem has has put out there that she is very much an advocate for job creation, and I am, too. And I think most of us are. Nobody here doesn't want jobs in our community. But what we want is a way to have a voice in this stuff, where people can't just donate to certain politicians and get themselves at the front of the line, where people actually have an opportunity for good jobs, right? If we're going into an economic downturn, we need to stimulate our own economy. We can't rely on profit-seeking corporations, private equity like Front Street Capital to run the show for us. You could create jobs on the bear team, as Hada Winston has asked you to do. You could create more jobs in the fire department, as they've asked you to do, right? And so we understand that this pot of money was approved by voters, and we understand that there is a need for job creation, but you're violating your own policies here, not to mention the city's ethics policy. I'll read to you from the list of prohibited conduct. Number eight, beneficial interests and contracts. No city representative will use his or her employment with the city or information gained as a result of his or her employment with the city for a purpose that is or gives the appearance of being motivated by the desire for private gain for himself, herself, or other persons, particularly with persons that he is family with, business, financial ties. And it goes on. Number nine, beneficial influence and contract selection. No city representative will influence the city's selection of or the conduct of business with a corporation, person, or firm having or proposing to do business with the city if the representative has a personal relationship and/or any financial interest in the company. How is this not a violation of number one, your spec building revolving loan program, and number two, your city's ethics policies? Now, I did check out the other eight council members. You all are clean. It's cool. But what are you getting out of this, right? We're creating jobs, and that's good, right? But jobs for who? What kind of jobs? What quality of jobs? Who is laughing all the way to the bank? Is it the Republicans that are donating to Mayor Joins? Is it the Republican who just came up here from Greater Winston-Salem? Your Winston-Salem Alliance became part of Greater Winston-Salem, and part of this program says they have to work with Greater Winston-Salem. This is a group that advertises Winston-Salem to outsiders to come in and raise our cost of living, raise our housing cost. This is not for the folks in Winston-Salem, who suffer from the worst upward economic mobility in the nation, aside from some Native American counties in the Dakotas. And so this is garbage. This program may be something that was approved by voters, but the way you're executing it is purely corrupt and is doing nothing to resolve the economic inequalities in our community. Thank you.
Paula Traffus?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. My name's Paula Traffus, 845 Knollwood Street in Winston. I also oppose this particular setup for this loan. I understand it's interest-free. I guarantee that with the savage federal cuts that are going to come down to state funding cuts, you're going to you're going to be losing a lot of, we are going to be losing a whole lot of funding. And I understand this is an interest-free loan. I believe that's correct. We're going to need that money, and Front Street Capital, I believe, is capitalist. They should be willing to shoulder the full cost of this speculative stuff. That means that they will profit if the thing goes well, and they'll suffer, as capitalists should, if it goes bonkers, all right? The other thing is jobs. I believe a previous speaker talked about advanced manufacturing. What that means is AI and robotics. It does not mean thousands of jobs. And so for the the cost of this, you may get a handful of custodial jobs, maybe, and then the folks coming from out of town for the managerial. I don't think it's a good investment, and I think we need to save the money.
Rebecca Johnson?
I'm Rebecca Johnson, 4361 Johnsboro Court, and I'm here to oppose this. In addition to what's already been said, I want to add a few more things, and actually in the spirit of what Coleman said earlier. It's a team sport here. We're all going to have some teamwork involved, and it takes a lot of teamwork to keep a community going and to keep its residents happy and also safe and valued and not losing money on projects that don't benefit them. Dan, when he was up here earlier, talked about the Dell project that completely wiped a bunch of jobs. To be exact, it was 905 jobs that we lost. And if we want to talk about job creation, as someone who's super into infrastructure, I come from the D.C. area. I think I took it for granted how well they do it there, but we need more walkability, and we need better maintenance on our roads. Why don't we start by hiring people to do those jobs? Just just an idea, maybe. And then also additionally, if we wanted to help, I mean, I'm here a lot with Housing Justice Now and with a bunch of the public housing, you know, bids to help to get help with that, and we're always told time and again, there's no money, or at least not right now. But if y'all give 3.5 million to companies, again, that are very capitalistic, that are for profit, and not really going to turn out much help for us or benefits for the residents here, I don't see how we can justify that. So that's my piece, but thank you all for hearing me out.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, and certainly I do feel a need to correct a couple of statements made there about Dell. That's always the whipping child, if you will. The city and county and others did invest $26 million in getting Dell to come here, and they did leave after four and a half years. But guess what? They paid back every penny that we put into it because we had good contracts to for performance there. And again, this these dollars are for economic development and must be used for that. I think it's been demonstrated that it's been a good return on investment for our community, three other projects that have been done and repaid within 18 months, basically, there. So I think we'll just leave it go there. So I would entertain a motion if.
I have the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
If there's a second, I would like to make a comment.
Yep.
Okay. I move for approval of agenda item G1.
Second?
Second by Mayor Protem. Councilman Clark?
Just real quickly, by the way, for the record, I am a capitalist, probably. The Team Family has never given a penny to my campaign in 25 years. Our loan program is open to anyone who would like to participate in it, if you want to bring a project forward, and I have no financial interest in this project, nor have ever had any financial dealings with the Team Family. I would say for those who wonder, well, we want to build affordable housing, we want we want to have a bear team, et cetera, et cetera, where do we get the money for that? We get it from property tax. And as was mentioned, the programs that Mr. Team has built in the past are generating between the city and the county, $2.5 million, $1 million a year in tax revenue. And that is the money we use to pay for all of these folks. And in exchange for that $2.5 million, we don't have a single penny in any of that because it's all was paid back. So as a Wharton MBA graduate, I will tell you, this is an excellent investment when you can get $2.5 million for no net investment in return. So I've made the motion and...
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. I did close it.
We're waiting.
It's not Regina.
There we go. It's unanimous. Thank you. And the motion was made by Councilmember Clark, by the way. All right, item G2.
Item G2, motion to excuse Councilmember Cipio from voting on item G3.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve to remove Councilmember Cipio from voting on item G2.
Is there a second?
G3.
I'll second the motion on G2 in reference to G3.
Okay, very good. And the reason we're doing this, Councilmember Cipio does serve on the Board of Family Services, so effort to be totally transparent. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Do I vote on this?
No, you don't.
You did. So it's unanimous to excuse, Councilmember Cipio, your excuse for voting on item G3. So we'll now hear item G3, please.
Item G3, consideration of items related to funding to Family Services, Inc. for a non-congregate emergencies shelter.
Thank you. Ms. Floyd is here, I believe, to present this item. Thank you for being here.
No problem. Good evening, Mayor Joins and City Council. The item you have before you is to allocate $1.5 million in home art funds to Family Services. Family Services is a domestic violence shelter that provides up to 36 beds for households that are experiencing domestic violence. They are looking to create a non-congregate shelter. So currently, they have a congregate setting, which is dormitory style. Moving to a non-congregate setting will allow them to provide services to families of different makes, such as single fathers, as well as families with older male children, so over the age of usually 12. Family Services is also here, if you have any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Floyd? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
Are we prepared to show the presentation, Family Services? Or not? Or that's in the agenda? No? I think it would be great. Or do we not want to show it?
If you want it, we can show it. It's coming. It's coming.
Can we get it on our screen? Is it coming? There we go. Thank you.
Ms. Floyd, can you walk us through this one?
Yes, no problem. So the city of Winston-Salem was allocated home art funds in the amount of $4.8 million. The allocation can be used for non-congreg- non-congregate shelters. So that is shelter that allows separate spaces for each individual, rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, and then operating assistance and nonprofit capacity building. The eligible population, so the first eligible population for these funds are for individuals who are experiencing homelessness as defined by HUD. So they are living literally homeless or in emergency shelters or on the streets or in a motel that is paid for by agency, or they are experiencing domestic violence. We also have imminent risk, so they are about to lose their housing within 14 days. So that's usually individuals that are about to be evicted from their homes. The second category of homelessness is at risk of homelessness. So they must meet quite a few categories. So one is they have to have an income that is below 30%, as well as lack sufficient resources to provide, to prevent their homelessness and then meet one of the following conditions listed below, and then also unaccompanied children and youth. And then the third qualifying population focused specifically on domestic violence. So ensuring that we are including individuals who may be experiencing domestic violence or survivors of domestic violence. The fourth population looks more at individuals who are at 30% and who meet one of the categories again below. So those are considered our other population. So these are the population that has the greater risk of becoming homeless without any type of assistance. So that's usually your missing metal of individuals with a very low income, you're working poor. So the need that Family Services has is that they have a current shelter that is dormitory style and they have seen an increase in request for shelter. Their current shelter is also an older building that has ongoing facility issues, including water damage. So in order to meet the need of the individuals that are requesting shelter, they are looking to demolish and rebuild a new shelter. The ask from the city of Winston-Salem is $1.5 million. What a total construction project cost is $10 million. They will demolish the existing shelter and construct a new 30,000 square foot shelter that would double the current capacity. They will also move to a bridge housing model. So this model has been practiced in other communities where the amount of time for individuals to stay in shelter is a little while longer, so it's up to six months. And during that time, it's more of an intensive case management. So they're focusing more on self-sustaining when you leave. So looking for employment, finding jobs, finding adequate housing and things of that nature. So that gives them a longer turnaround time to work with households. They also will keep a trauma-informed approach for their physical spaces, as well as the type of case management services that they'll provide. So there are reporting requirements. So for home art, they will have the 15-year use requirement. So if they decide to change the use before that 15 period, the grant will have to be repaid. Also, after 15 years, they have the option to turn it into permanent supportive housing if they are interested in that. They are not allowed to charge any occupancy fees. They have a strong relocation plan. Family Services is here to speak to that relocation plan and the separate pot of money that they'll use for that. And then this is an eligible use because of the domestic violence piece. This is a picture of what the new shelter will look like. And Michelle Spees? Michelle's here, if you guys have any questions for Family Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about programming or timeline or logistics.
You state your name.
Oh, Michelle Spees.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Floyd, of Councilmember Clark?
It says in here this is a replacement. Do you currently have a shelter?
We do.
And where is it?
It's in an undisclosed location just due to security reasons, but the new facility, this one will be on the same location as the other site.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Andrew Bourne.
Thank you, Mayor. So during construction, you're going to tear the building down that's currently there. Is there going to be a temporary relocation for the residents to go?
Yes, we're exploring several options right now. One would be to build a temporary facility that we could use for 18 to 24 months, depending on construction timeline. The other alternative would be we've explored renting and securing hotel space to include catering fees. We'd have to provide meals. And we have two hotels that have put in, responded to our RFP for that as well. So I think the question is, do we go and build something on our own that we then in turn resell, or do we just basically rent something for 24 months?
Second question. And your fundraising goal is a little over, is close to $11 million? How, I know you guys have been doing this for about a year now, a little under a year. How's it looking so far?
Absolutely fantastic. I say the first three letters in fundraising spell fun. This is the most exciting project I've worked on in my career at Family Services. We're at 66% of that goal. We plan to have a public groundbreaking in October. IALON Construction is our general contractor. Mr. Welch is here with me tonight as well. We plan to break ground in the first quarter of 2025 and hopefully assume occupancy in 2026.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Floyd?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of item G3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous with the Councilmember Cipio being excused from voting on this item. All right, item G4.
Item G4, adoption of a resolution regarding the North Carolina League of Municipalities 2025 City Vision Annual Conference.
This resolution selects the Councilmember Cipio as our voting delegate for this and Councilmember Clark as the alternate voting delegate. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clark, a motion by Mayor Protem. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Cipio and Clark for representing us as the voting delegates there. Item G5.
Item G5, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, entitled Boards and Commissions of the Winston-Salem City Code, Division 19, entitled Civil Service Board.
Assistant City Manager Wajah.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Sharon Voita, Assistant City Manager. Back in June of 2024, council approved an ordinance establishing the Civil Service Board. When that ordinance was written, it anticipated a kind of in-paper, in-person voting process. As we were gearing up for that election, we talked with police chief and the fire chief, who indicated that an electronic voting option would work better for their departments just operationally. It's less time pulling staff out of resources to come down and vote. Also felt that it would probably increase participation since being able to vote electronically would make that process more accessible. So since the original ordinance did not include an electronic voting option, that's what we're proposing to you tonight, to just add that language, add that language in. And the current schedule, we hope to have that board in place by July 1.
Very good. Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of item G5. Second.
Second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G6.
Item G6, resolution ratifying city managers' actions regarding a contractual amendment with Novant Health.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council. My name is William Cranham. I'm currently serving as the interim HR Director. The item before you is a revolution to ratify the city manager's actions regarding amendment to our contract with Novant Health. Originally, the contract was not to exceed $350,000 annually. However, with the expansion of the employee health clinic and the increase with the prices in terms of medical supplies and services, the amount has now increased to roughly around $376,000. I'd like to highlight that the clinic now operates with a advanced practitioner and staff with registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, certified medical assistants. And because of this, we can now do evaluations, we can do diagnosis, as well as treatment for both acute and chronic medical conditions. Some of the services that we offer include COVID-19 testing, flu and strep testing, blood sugar and blood pressure tests, skin cancer screenings, cholesterol tests. We also do in-house physicals and drug screenings. Additional more, it's also more essential health services included into that as well. To ensure we continue to provide these critical health services, the staff is recommending approval of this amendment, increasing not to exceed amount to $500,000. This is for the remaining terms of the contract, which aligns with the increased approval for city manager's authority. The current currently runs through October 26th and the RFP we made public later this year so that I can go back and prepare for the next contract cycle. And I have four questions.
Any questions, Mr. Cranfield? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And item G7.
Item G7, resolution pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of Winston-Salem.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. This is the final step that council's been on the path of the North Carolina League of Municipalities Committing to Civility Program. None of the, many of the council members have taken the training that was required to do this, have attended a variety of sessions. This last requirement is for the council to adopt this resolution saying that you will commit to operate in a civil manner.
All right, any questions, comments? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Joins. And this is based off of the civility training that we did via webinar a few months ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, entertain a motion.
I move for approval of item G7.
Thank you.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, we do have a need for a closed session. I'd recognize Councilmember Clark for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 to discuss potential litigation items with the city attorney and to preserve the attorney's right of privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-3181A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to go in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we'll go in closed session.
I need one more.
And go.
Is there a motion to end closed session?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton, second by Councilman Andrea Bowen, to end closed session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mayor Proton, second by Councilman TPO. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we're adjourned.